So, welcome everyone to the June twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three Tumwater City Council work session. I believe everyone is here except for Charlie Schneider, who is has an excuse. Excused absence tonight. So with that. And so we have a little different kind of agenda this evening because we have a couple of action items that need to be taken care of. Because we will not have the July fourth meeting and and. So we will have too much time in between in this these particular items need to be addressed before that. So. With that, yes.
Could could I make a comment?
Yes, Councilmember Kathy.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I'm really hoping that us having work sessions with this type of agenda is just because of. The times that we've had to miss council meetings and. If you all remember, we had a discussion about things not coming to committees or going on to. The consent agenda and so on and so forth. And I'm hoping that we. We get solidly back to. You know, committees and work sessions and open discussion and whatever this. That's I think that's really important. I think that's the democratic way to do things and it's elected official. And I'm sure others here have used the terms voice of the people or in touch with the community and that kind of thing. And so. I'm really hoping that that we can have more opportunity to use our work sessions for getting. You know, conversation and discussion and that type of thing. So I just want to bring that up because I saw that and I. And I believe it's similar to our next work session also. So. I'm hoping it's an anomaly and not in a direction we're gonna go.
Yeah, I I myself think this is an exception and it's not the rule. So.
Okay, well, I just I just wanted to express that because we got into quite a deal, you know, before talking about the. You know, the consent agenda and how stuff gets on the docket and all that. So. Yeah, thank you for letting me express that.
Yeah, not a problem at all. Thank you. All right. So with that, we do have one action item that is the Israel Road. And Linderson Way Main Project Schedule seventy-four project plan and Schedule seventy-four Underground. On conversion, construction agreement with PSC and Bill. Will be presenting. Bill, are you there?
Yeah, yes, yes, I am. Good evening. Mayor and council members and all all others attending, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen to start my presentation. See. There we go. Can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started. I I have two tonight that are on this that have to do with the same project. So I'm gonna keep the first one a little bit brief. So I'm not repeating project data too much for the two the two different presentations. The first one tonight is the Israel Road and Linderson Water Main Project, and it has to do with the Schedule seventy-four. Project Plan and Construction Agreement, and that's to authorize a signature of those agreements. And to, whoops. Sorry. So a quick overview of this part of the project. So this this part of the project has to do with. The Schedule seventy-four undergrounding of PSNE. Overhead lines. So this project has. Three thousand one hundred fourteen feet of overhead power that will be converted to underground. The work limits are on Israel Road from Linderson to Capitol Boulevard. And as part of the project, it also includes all the service connections. To be under grounded to the right away line within the project limits. The there are two agreements that Schedule seventy-four Schedule seventy-four has a number of agreements, but the two we're talking about today. Are this is the Schedule seventy-four project plan. And then also the Schedule seventy-four construction agreement, and those two agreements are actually linked together. Kind of into one agreement. The Schedule seventy-four project plan basically includes a scope of work. It describes everything that's gonna occur for the undergrounding work. Includes construction plans, specifications, and work requirements. Describes operating rights. Construction work schedule. So an estimate estimation of the work schedule and how long it will take to do the work. And then also has an estimate for the construction cost estimate. The actual Schedule seventy-four construction agreement is the actual contractual agreement with PSC that the city signs. And that has the contractual verbiage between the city and PSNE. And that that construction agreement references the project plan as part of the agreement. And these are agreements that are very typical with Schedule seventy-four projects. The work responsibilities for this type of an agreement. Is that PSC will supply the conduits and the transformers, install all of the electrical system. Coordinate and complete all the change orders, changeovers and transfers of new service. Remove and deactivate the overhead lines once the once the system has been converted. And then provide a project inspection services to for the contractor while they're doing their work. The city's responsibility, which would ultimately be the contractor that we hire for the project. Will be to construct the utility trench and conduits. And then also just install the service transformers in their location on their on their foundation. The costing for the Schedule seventy-four is a shared cost. It's sixty percent. PSC and forty percent City of Tumwater. With the city's funding coming from the transportation CFP. The total estimate for this agreement is nine hundred forty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars. PSC's portion is five hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred twelve dollars. And the city's cost estimate is the city's portion is three hundred seventy-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. And that's all I had for this presentation. So I will. Stop sharing. Did anybody have any questions?
Yeah, any questions? And I believe we have to have a motion. Councilmember Swarthout.
I'd like to make the motion that the City Council approved and authorized the mayor to sign the Puget Sound Energy Schedule seventy-four project plan. And Schedule seventy-four construction agreement to complete utility undergrounding conversion for the Israel Road and Linderson Way. Water Main Project.
I'll second. This is Michael.
It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Althaus. Or any discussion on that? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Great, the motion carries. And so the next item is the Israel Road and Linderson Way. Water Main Project award to authorize to sign the contract and Bill Lindour is also doing that one. So you're. You're busy this evening.
I am busy. Thank you. So I will share my screen. For my presentation. So hopefully everyone can see that.
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, thank you. So again, this is discussing the Israel Road and Linderson Way Water Main Project. This is a request to award the project, the Public Works Contract after our bidding process. So I wanted to talk just a little bit about the background for the project. So this project ultimately is it's a water main replacement project. And then it's also a utility undergrounded project. The water main component is discussed in our Water Capital Facilities Plan. So it's part of it's to address a. Item that was brought up in that the capital facilities plan component. And then it's also supported in the two thousand and twenty-one comprehensive water system plan update. The project is needed to replace the the aging asbestos water line that's in Israel Road. I think that. Waterline was installed in like nineteen fifty, so it's pretty close to the end of its design life. Provide safe and reliable water system for the city. And also to underground the existing overhead utilities, partly in preparation for future work on Israel Road the next year. The scope of work, just a brief summary of the scope of work. The water main replacement on Israel Road basically is gonna stretch from Interstate five all the way over to Capitol Boulevard. The replacement on Linderson Way is going to start at Israel Road. And head south about nine hundred fifty feet to the Labor and Industries access to their parking lot. It's gonna include all. We're gonna upgrade all of the service connections to the right of way for the water system. So the. The whole water system within the right of way is gonna be new by the time we're finished, and that'll include fire hydrants and things like that. And then also there will be. Segments of sidewalk and other things that will need to be removed to build the water line, and those components will be replaced as part of this project. The utility underground improvements, like we talked about a minute ago. Is the undergrounding conversion from Linderson to Capitol. That's about three thousand one hundred fifteen feet. Again, service connection upgrades for that. And then also. Undergrounding the other utilities that are on the power poles such as Astound, Lumen, Comcast, things like that. We're gonna move those to an underground utility trench. Here's a quick overview of the entire project scope. The the yellow line from Linderson to Capitol is the utility trench location and the cyan line from. I five to Capitol on Israel and then down Linderson is the water main replacement about four thousand seven hundred feet total for that. So today we're specifically talking about the construction bid. So we put the project out to bid. We opened bids on June the twenty-second. That was last Thursday. Reviewed the bids. We received seven total bids. The bids were pretty spread out. We had three bids that were. In the three point eight to four million range, right up in there. And then we had three bids on the lower end. And one mid-range bid. Our highest bid was. Three million nine hundred thirty thirty-nine thousand seven hundred dollars and fifty cents. Our lowest bid was three million three hundred sixty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents. And that was from re trucking and excavating. Out of Puyallup, Washington. Our estimated construction cost for the project was right around was two million nine hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. That was the engineer's estimate that we completed at the end of design. And we anticipated a range of about two point seven to three point two million was where the bids were gonna come in. As you can see, our engineer's estimate was was a bit lower than our actual lowest bid. Works out to about twelve point three percent below. Typically. We like to see engineers' estimates coming in about ten percent above or below. So it's pretty close to the ten percent. It's not quite there. But what we did was we went back and did a pretty deep dive into the the bidding docs that we received from the lowest bid. And did a full evaluation of that. And we we believe that the. Cost estimated by the lowest bid is that the true cost of construction for this particular environment right now. So we do recommend that we move forward with with awarding the bid at the lowest bidder, even though it is a little bit over ten percent. I'm sure you might have a few questions on that. I'll I'll move on. And then if you have any questions on that, I can answer more specifics. Later, the the funding. Is the the water main improvements are funded through the Water CFP and the Schedule seventy-four, the city portion is funded through the Transportation CFP. The project schedules scheduled for fifty working days. It's about two and a half months. With if if the project is awarded, we're expecting construction is gonna start about mid-July. There's one item I wanted to bring up to make you aware of. We did get one bid protest on this project. It's kind of uncommon, but it does happen on occasion. For those of you that aren't aware of what that is, you know, a bid protest protest is a. Mechanism that an aggrieved bidder can use. To challenge the execution of the of a contract with to another bidder. In this case, it was the second lowest bidder. Who brought up the protest. And in summary, what the protest was, it was. A protest where there's a document that we have as part of our bid docs, which is called the sub sub consultant or subcontractor. Form that they have to fill out and. The the aggrieved bidder is saying that the lowest bidder didn't fill out electrician as part of that subcontractor form. Thus that, you know, they're claiming that that means that they're not a viable bidder. They brought that issue up in a specific location on the project. So we've evaluated that the claim and. Our our assessment of the situation is that it's not a viable claim. And that no electrician is needed for the work in that location. So currently, we've notified the the. Second lowest bidder that we've evaluated the claim and we're going to be providing documentation to them here shortly in the next day or so. Explaining the situation and that we're we're not that we're gonna. That their claim doesn't have any merit, basically. Our understanding is is that we can award the bid with a protest. As long as we have addressed certain steps prior to actual execution of the contract. So I'm sure that. There might be some questions. At this point.
Are there any questions, Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, Bill, I have a question. So when you did the analysis between. Our number for the bid and the lowest bid. What did you find? So.
It 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 can be kind of complicated because some. It really just has to do with how they bid. You know, some things they'll bid higher than we estimated and some things that they'll bid bid lower. Really, what we're looking for is we're looking for things that don't make sense in the bid. You know, some contractors can do things more efficiently than others, so thus they just bid less. As opposed to more. There are a lot of complications with this project. Some of it is timing. We have a very short window to build the project. That's a very hard thing to estimate. Because contractors base their costs off of. Their ability to to have their workforce available to do projects. So we're trying to build this project this summer. Especially the portion in front of the school. So I think the answer is we did. Our our biggest issue was that when we looked at the lowest bidder and evaluated their numbers, we didn't see anything that looked incorrect. It it looked like a solid bid.
Okay, so I was just was that was it the HR cost? Was it the employee cost that you saw where that twelve percent difference is?
That would be really hard for me to like narrow it down. What I can tell you is I can tell you that. You know, I've been I've been in the business for about twenty-five years, and in the last couple of years, it has been extremely difficult to. Estimate projects correctly. And the biggest reason why is because we have a lot of volatility. In all kinds of things, labor forces, energy prices, materials. So it has become kind of a challenge to bid projects. You know, accurately, I think like we we did, you know, a number of years ago. So it has been more difficult.
So things are changing. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gaby.
So Bill, for my educational purposes, you said that this is the second lowest bid, right? The one that the one that the one that's challenging the the bid.
I it it was the second lowest bidder that expressed the challenge.
Okay, so now. Because they are the second lowest bidder. If their challenge has been sustained, would they have been awarded the contract?
Um. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the.
If 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 if. If that company's challenge has been sustained by you, whether I was doing the analysis. Would they have been awarded the contract given knowing that they were the second lowest, not the least?
That that ultimately would have been. I mean, it's up to to you as council. But our recommendation probably would have been to to award because the second low was within twenty thousand dollars. And so right now, our determination of recommending award was we we believe that the project is worth it, and we're not gonna get lower bids. If we try to go back out, you know, it would have been the same situation with the second low.
Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a qualifying question for Brandon, who just went off video. With the process of if there's a protest and it's deemed viable, right? Is your process, like you just said, we could have awarded to that, or wouldn't you have to go back out for bids?
We we can always award to second low, third low. The the way that the process is set up, we have specific reasons why we can reject bids. And if we reject bids, we automatically look at the second low. And if the second low is still within what? Our budget and what we think that it's worth. Yet we can we can proceed with awarding.
So you have flexibility in your options. Got it. Thank you.
We just have to be careful when we're either rejecting a bid. Or not rejecting a bid in this particular situation. There's always you always gotta be careful, make sure that you dot your i's and cross your t's, and that's what Bill's doing right now.
Any other questions? Are we ready for a motion? Councilmember Swarthout.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that the City Council awarded authorized the mayor to sign a Public Works Contract. With Retrucking and Excavating Incorporated of Puyallup, Washington. In the amount of three million three hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixteen cents. For the Israel Road and Linderson Way Water Main Project.
Right, do I have a second?
I'll second. This is.
I think Councilmember Dahlhoff is just a hair ahead of you, Councilmember Jefferson. So I, Councilmember Swarthout moved and. And Councilmember Dahlhoff, second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. Thank you so much, Bill. This was great. And now we're going to move on to discussion items, which is what our normal work session does. So. The first item is the Community Garden Update and Chuck Denny, are you on board to start this?
Yes, I am. Chuck Denny, Parks Recreation Director, glad to be with you all tonight. Bringing you an update on what's going on with community gardens. You might remember when we went through the. Metropolitan Park District Formation Process back in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. One thing that came out of public comment was people wanted us to invest in community gardens. So working through that, working through the. The Planning Committee with the Metropolitan Park District, the Parks Commission, ultimately the City Council, we approved a budget that had two hundred thousand dollars in it. To invest in community gardens over time as. Local nonprofits, businesses, or groups came to us with an interest in creating a community garden space. The first and really the only one so far, but the first one we got was from the Methodist Church. That's been going for, I think, two years now. And doing fairly well. I'm excited about how it's gone and how it looks and the things that are happening there. Over the last two years, we have invested about twenty thousand dollars in Metropolitan Park District funds. To assist them in the creation of the garden, and that's things like building boxes, soil, fencing. Supplies to. Water the garden, water meter, water lines, things like that, infrastructure things. And then they do the work to create the actual garden. And do the work to to grow the vegetables. So. I don't have a lot of talking to do tonight. Deb Williams, who's the Community Garden Coordinator at the site, is here with us. And she's gonna provide us with an update on on what they've done and what's going on and and how great that program is. So Deb, if you could. Chime in now, that would be great. And then if you have any questions, either one of us can can answer those.
Hi, thanks, Chuck. I can't not able to start my video. Hopefully somebody can fix that for me. I do have a presentation to share, so I'll go ahead and do that. Okay, are you able to see the slides?
Yes, we're able to.
Okay, great. Um, so. The, oops, it stopped me. Okay. Okay, we'll go from there. Um, so the Tumwater Community Garden was an idea I came up with in two thousand and twenty-one through through. I'm a religious person, so through prayer and 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 just a calling to to do the garden. And. It's been an amazing project that really surprised me and. The interest has been phenomenal in the garden. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the benefits of community gardens and. So one of our vision statement for the garden is to connect and meet the needs of the community and practice living our neighbors, nurturing independent skills. Healthy living and stewardship. And so how do we do that? We provide a garden area for the community. Create community collaboration. Raise food for the Thurston County Food Bank and educate and include people. So I wanted to show you a little bit of our progress. This was our fearless crew in two thousand and twenty-one. Creating our food bank garden and these raised beds that we have were donated by one of our church members. Her daughter passed away. And intended to make gardens and was not able to. And so we took those raised beds, adapted them for our garden. And produced the first community garden here in Tumwater. And then here's some pictures just last week of our community gardens, and you can see how bountiful they've been. This is Pam, one of our volunteers. Looking at some peas for us there. So it's been a journey. Last year, we had seven gardeners. This year, we have eight gardeners. Some of them have elected to have two gardens. And so they and they paid for that. So in the the response has been really great. We have also room to add a few more raised beds in the area, and so that's on our radar to do that in the future. We have all ages. We have from twenty-year-olds to eighty-year-olds that garden with us. And some of them are knowledgeable, some of them are beginners, and all of them kind of come together and share. And ask questions about gardening. We answer as best we can and have lots of resources for them to learn more. There's a lot of apartments nearby, our church and mobile homes and other areas that where they don't have. Gardens available to them. And so this is a perfect opportunity for people to do a little gardening, get outside and to belong to our group. So this year. This is where the Food Bank Garden started, and this was just freshly rototilled earth. Early this year. After we had a long time coming on the water, getting the water meter installed, and thank you to the city for doing that for us. They were just very busy and we finally got that put in, and that allowed us to start setting up our garden this year. And so it was a mad rush to get the garden set up and fenced in. And so this is our food bank garden on the left. This is our planting day. This is what it looked like planting day and and. More of our volunteers here. Some of these are gardeners. Some of these are church members that are on the garden committee. And if you see this box on the right, that's our first box of produce we're very proud of. We have some radishes and and greens, things in there. So fencing, we we put in twenty-five hundred square foot of fencing for the Food Bank Garden, approximately one sixteenth of an acre. And we're growing everything from radishes to tomatoes. We will be adding some berries and a. We will be adding some berries and a, an area to grow larger squash on the bank. That's a sloped bank area. And I wanted to talk to you too about education and inclusion. So we have a Boy Scout project that was completed for the food bank garden that is a seating area, and they donated a barbecue for us, so we can have outdoor events there. And they have a new Boy Scout project that they're planning for the food bank garden to put in a wash station and a weighing station for our produce, so we can get it ready to take to the food bank. Also, the, the kids from Thurston County Juvenile Detention came over and helped us twice, last year and this year, move mulch and dirt onto our gardens, and they're just fabulous, and they, they jumped right in there and got everything moved for us. It's a lot of heavy work, um, so we really appreciated them doing that. We have events also in the garden. We had a tomato planting demonstration last year and this year. And I'll be giving an organic pest control and fertilizing, um, seminar, and then we have a food preservation event also for anyone that would like to attend, our gardeners or anyone else. Um, I think they're going to be doing dill pickles and jams for that. And so what's in our future? Well, this, these is, this is the initial plan, and we have completed phase one and two, which is the community garden and the food bank garden. So our next stage is a orchard. The church has a sloped area that's not being used, um, that's right next to Lana Lane here. And so what we plan to put in some fruit trees here, and we're still, um, debating what we'd like to put in there. We've talked about apple trees, hazelnut trees, um, a variety of fruits we're thinking of and/or nuts. And so that will be hopefully starting this fall. We'll start to get that set up. What else is happening? Well, we're having a garden dedication August twenty-seventh at twelve P M. at the church, and I want you to know you're all invited. We would love to have you come visit and take a look at the garden. And also, we, we do need to do our own fundraising because, um, while the city was very generous in getting us started and getting the basics done and put in, we do have ongoing costs. So what we plan to have is a pie sale and contest starting in September. And, um, that's about all I have for you tonight. This is my statement. There are no more friendly, hopeful, or hopeful people than gardeners. I hope you do agree with me there. I wanted to make sure to thank people who have helped us through this process, especially Chuck Denny and Angela Jefferson, and of course, the city for being so generous and helping us get this established. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Uh, Councilmember Altuser, and then Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thanks, Mayor, and, and thanks for this presentation. You know, I, I did offer my, my thanks to you as, as well as a hearty congratulations on really kicking this project off on the right foot. Um, I guess my question is just if members of the public are watching this, or if any of us want to contribute, want to help out or volunteer, what's the best way of communicating our, our willingness and our, our helpfulness in terms of trying to, to partner to make this a success?
Yeah, we welcome anyone who wants to come help volunteer. We always have things we're working on. Um, you can absolutely send me an email at tomwattergarden@gmail.com, and I will send you our work schedule and our event schedule, and you can come join us for whatever you would like to.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thanks, Mayor. Deb, thanks for that. Um, and I, I'm a visual person, so I really dig, um, your slides. The one question I had that's been coming up that we're hearing is food scarcity in manufactured home parks, too specifically that, um, members in each one have reached out to the city. Um, one of the thoughts, uh, talking about, of engaging community and getting seniors out there, or whatever, that age demographic in those manufactured home parks would be like a little community garden or plots on their land. Um, do you, I mean, I'm just, I put it out there, like, I don't know if you have capacity. I know you're at the church, but could there be an opportunity to have a discussion of what it would look like to do smaller plots for seniors at their homes?
Absolutely, um, and there is, uh, projects through, I think it's through the food bank in Lacey, where they have, uh, Victory Gardens, where they do build gardens for people um, for free in their, at their home. So that's one option. Um, if the city wants to, and there's land available, that's kind of the key part, is that land is available. We could put, uh, community garden in a manufactured home park or other space, depending on where we think it's needed.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, just a comment, and Deb, thank you, and Chuck Denny, thank you for just making this a reality, and, um, I think this is what the city leadership envisioned, uh, community. Um, it's good to see the juveniles from the juvenile dis- uh, center coming out there and just working together. You hosting classes, and you've made huge progress since I went out there for your grand opening, and you are quite welcome. It was a pleasure. Um, and I look forward to your success, and thanks for your leadership.
Thank you, Angela. We really appreciate you too.
Great, uh, Councilmember Kathy.
Hi, Deb. Um, I just want to tell you that this, uh, this brings my heart such great joy. Uh, this was a, a, a dream of mine and a hope and whatever when we, uh, started the Metropolitan Parks District and put in community gardens. I was fortunate enough to be on, on those committees, and this was, um, this is exactly, this is exactly it. It's so amazing to see something that you hope and dream and work for uh, happen, and then to have it be a benefit and to have it be a blessed thing that other people can enjoy and learn and, and the community part of it, people coming together. So I just want to say thank you to you so much for grabbing hold of this from the very, from the very beginning. I remember the first walk through there. Those first pictures you showed were um, what I saw, and we looked at all of that stuff and went, oh, wow, this will really work, but oh my goodness, this is a lot of work. But, um, it, it is a wonderful thing. And I just wanted to ask you, do you still, um, are open certain days, or are you still connected with the food bank in giving out food at your church?
Yes, we do. We do food bank, uh, distribution at the church. I believe it's every third Wednesday.
Every third Wednesday?
I believe so, yes, in the evening. And we had, um, we had really, really busy this last week. We did a donation, must be a third Wednesday. Um, and they were, they got rid of all their food, like, so they're going to actually ask for, I think, three more, three to four more, um, you know, food, um, bundles for this coming one, because we ran, almost ran out, so.
So do people make contributions to your church, uh, food, uh, or is it all just garden food?
Um, people, like, we do take food donations at church, so we'll do, we, we do a food donation through the church, and then the food bank brings food over for the distribution, so it all goes through the food bank, and the same with the garden produce. We take it to the food bank, and then they sort it out and distrib- distribute it.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
That's, uh, that's, that's good, because, uh, you know, people are looking for locations more local in Tomwater than needing to go to the, to the food bank.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, our vol- go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say our volunteers are fantastic. Um, every time I get a little nervous that nobody's going to show up, they're there in spades, and even if it's raining, even if it's cold, they show up and they help, and it's very encouraging, you, to me to keep going, and including our garden volunteers who aren't even associated with the church, and we've had people even come to church to, um, to join with us because of the gardens. This is a very visible sign of us reaching out to our community. And it's really created a sense of belonging for people that may be a little lonely or not connected yet. Um, and so it's been a great way to meet people and connect with the community.
Absolutely. Um, do you have a way for people to make donations, or do they have to come to church or prayer meeting and put it in the plate?
Uh, no, you can go on to the church website and make a donation specifically for the food bank or for the gardens. Um, we do have a, a dropdown. There's a, it's called Easy Tide. So there's a link on the website, so it's tomwaterumc.org.
Very good. It's good for the community that doesn't need, uh, the food or the service to know how they can give, so you can help people. So we expand the community that way, and, and our, our compassion and, and hope for others. So thanks again, Deb. It's, it's wonderful.
Thank you for letting me present today. I really appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and I got to see it last year when we had the, uh, night out program and, and got to tour it then too, so I look forward to seeing it this year. So I really appreciate it. All right, with that, we're going, Chuck, we're going to move to the Palermo Trail Briefing, and you're, uh, presenting on that.
I am. Thank you very much. Uh, I have a few slides to show you. Uh, went to General Government Committee with this, this project, and they have a recommendation for the council to authorize funding uh, for, from park impact fees, uh, for the development of the trail system in the Palermo, uh, wellfield down to the Palermo neighborhood. I'll share some pictures with you. The there we go. The Palermo Park, uh, is a pocket park that really is just a slice off of, uh, the city's wellfield property that, uh, was turned into a small neighborhood park many years ago. Uh, Palermo, the, the neighborhood in Palermo is a kind of isolated by itself down at the bottom of the hill, kind of wedged between uh, the bottom of the hill and the Tomwater Valley Golf Course. Uh, small park just contains a grassy area, a small children's, children's play structure and a basketball court. But, uh, for as long as I can remember, and that's quite a while here in Tomwater, uh, there's been an informal trail system that goes from this park through the city's wellfield and comes out behind, uh, what is now Burger King. And really, at times, that was just a, a very narrow, almost a, a wildlife trail, but uh, people have used it over the years enough to maintain it as a very, a very skinny dirt path. And what we're proposing is to turn the trail into, uh, more of a developed and maintainable, uh, trail system. And it's actually included as part of the design in the overall Deschutes Valley Trail, uh, the city's border-to-border trail system that goes from Historical Park, uh, all the way through Pioneer Park, and it, that trail connects Historical Park and, and the brewery park at Tomwater Falls, uh, to the golf course, to the Palermo Park, to the Deschutes Valley Park on T Street, and eventually to, uh, Pioneer Park. So you can see, uh, the red circle and trail spur, uh, number one nine and trail spur number two seven, oh, two seven, that's, okay, trail spur two, one and one and two, uh, off of the Deschutes Valley Trail. These are more informal trails. They're not ADA accessible trails, just a, because of topography. Um, in order to make something like this trail, uh, ADA accessible, we, we nearly have to cut down the entire forest in the, in the wellfield, so, uh, we're not doing that here. It's, uh, proposed to be an eight, eight-foot-wide gravel trail, uh, with an interpretive signage. We'll do some benches. Um, and construction-wise, we have some drainage and other things to do. The layout itself, um, Palermo Park here is at the top, uh, and you can see the trail goes from that park, uh, up the hill to, uh, this is Burger King, uh, right here, so there'll be a, a trailhead here, and the reconstruction of, of Capitol Boulevard, Capital Trosper Project, uh, and Linda Street, there'll be a new parking lot that we'll use as a trailhead, uh, for this, this trail element. Uh, we'll also have an offshoot of the trail, and this is what will eventually connect to the Deschutes Valley Trail, which is a loop uh, that comes around here. This is a, there, there is standing water in here. This is sort of a an informal lake, uh, lots of wildlife, uh, and things to interpret in this area. And eventually, uh, this red trail is the Deschutes Valley Trail and how it winds along the golf course and ends up going to the Deschutes Valley Park. So the connection from the, this trail will be right in this area, uh, to the future Deschutes Valley Trail. Couple of shots, uh, I just walked through there, uh, a couple of weeks ago and took some pictures. You can see the, the watershed in here, uh, and this is how the trail looks in, in various spots. It's one of those things similar to the golf course where you're right in the middle of town, but you get it, you know, just a hundred yards into something like this, and it feels like you're in the middle of nowhere in, in nature. Really beautiful setting, um, it'll make a great trail, uh, and hopefully see a lot of use. The, uh, uh, transportation engineering staff worked with me on this and came up with the initial engineer's estimate for what it would cost to develop that, that entire, the loop and the trail up to, uh, the top by Calip- Capitol Boulevard. Initial estimate is four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. We're asking for, uh, authorities spend up to five hundred thousand dollars, uh, out of parking pack fees, and that's planned for the Deschutes Valley Trail, the use of those parking pack fees, uh, which this fits into. Construction could be, could begin as early as fall. It really just depends on staff availability, um, with other projects that we have going on. That's a really quick summary of that trail. Um, it does a couple of things. It, it provides a transportation element, and people will be able to easily walk from uh, the valley and from the Palermo neighborhood up to really the business center of Tomwater at, uh, Capital and Trosper. Also, and I think most of you know, we've had some problems, uh, in the watershed with, uh, various activities and encampments and things like that, and our goal here is to improve the area, make it a trail that people want to use and get some traffic through there, uh, which will help eliminate some of that, uh, nefarious activity that, that we don't want to see going on. At the very least, it provides us with more eyes on, uh, with people going through the neighborhood and, and seeing what's happening in the city's watershed. So we'll work with, um, transportation engineering staff to, to, to make this happen. We'll also work with um, water resources and, uh, stream team to do some interpretive stuff, interpretive stuff around the watershed and the wetlands that are there. Also, there's some, some pretty good trees, uh, and there's a little history in that site too. So, number of things we can do to make it more attractive, uh, and overall, I think it's a great project. So if you have questions on that, I'd be happy to address them.
Uh, Councilmember Jefferson?
Um, yes, Chuck, how long is the trail? Is it a half a mile, a mile and a half?
Uh, you know, we, uh, you, I don't, I don't have that right off the top of my head, uh, Councilman Jefferson. I, I would guess it's probably, if you walk the whole thing, it's probably around a half a mile.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Councilmember Sorthout?
Ask, um, how do the people, uh, the neighbors feel in the Palermo sites? I thought that there was some kind of concern with people, you know, walking through there, and, um, so is that, that's still okay with them as far as, um, extending this trail?
You know, we didn't, we didn't check back in with them for, for this piece of that trail. When we originally designed the Deschutes Valley Trail and we had our public meetings, we had that trail going, instead of going through, uh, hole one and two on the golf course, which is a kind of a tight fit and, and a, an expensive little section of trail to do because of the wetlands. We had taken the, the original trail on this route and through the Palermo neighborhood to M Street. Um, so the more formalized, uh, trail, the, the actual Deschutes Valley Trail would have gone right through their neighborhood. They were not, well, there were several residents there that were not at all happy with that. So we worked with them over several meetings and onsite visits and talks and with our designer, and and deleted that section of the trail. So we rerouted it back to the golf course side, uh, even though that added a, a significant cost to that little section, but, um, they're aware of this trail spur and, and how that design ended up, and, and kind of we, we had an agreement that we wouldn't do our, our original plan, but we would still do this plan uh, because we want to provide as many sections of town access to the Deschutes Valley Trail at as many points as possible.
Any other questions? Councilmember Kathy?
Chuck, I love this proj- project, and those pictures you took are, are wonderful. I can just picture people walking through there and, uh, feeling the breeze in those trees, and probably a lot of people don't even know there's a watershed down there, and, uh, I, I think this is, um, something that'll, that will get a lot of, a lot of travel and a lot of, a lot of kudos to the city and to you. And also, I wanted to tell you that I didn't mean to leave you out when I was talking about the community gardens because you were a a big part of that. And I know you um tore a little bit of your hair out, but you still have plenty. Um, and uh it was, it was a windy road to establish uh the community gardens. But you know, thanks to you and some of the extra work you had to do for that, I think we put together a great program. And so tonight, you deserve a lot of credit. So I wanted to tell you that. Mine, I wanted to thank you.
Thank you very much. You know, not to go backwards on the agenda, but you know, they're doing that community garden and coming up with a process and really trusting uh a group to to use city funds and do what they said they were going to do and be successful at it. Um, lot of hands involved in that. A lot of people made it work and and it's exciting to see them do as well as they are.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? And you don't, this is in the briefing portion, right, Chuck? And we don't need to take action, correct?
Uh, I would like you to affirm General Government Committee's recommendation and authorize us to spend the funds out of parking pack fees to complete the trail.
I see Karen coming up.
Well, this is listed as a discussion item, so I recommend that if there's actually action that needs to be taken, it be moved to a formal council meeting.
Okay.
All right. Great, thank you. Uh, any other discussion? So we can bring it forward, Chuck.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Uh, this is might be an easy one. We'll be out to enjoy some sunshine. Uh, the next item is the mayor city administrator report. And uh first I want to welcome uh Lisa Parks, because this is her first meeting as our new city administrator. So this is really exciting. And uh, so Lisa, do you want me to throw you in the big end of the, deep into the pool and have you, if you have anything to brief on uh to start? I should have discussed that first, but I just throw it out there.
Sure, that'd be great. Um, thank you. And um I'm super glad to finally be on uh on the job. Um, I've been enjoying my first couple of weeks. Uh, I'm flying solo this week without my predecessor uh along for uh helping me out. But um you have a really great staff here at the city of Tumwater and um I know you all know that. And I just want to affirm that. It's been a lot of fun so far. Um, and uh, and we're very busy. Um, so just a couple of things, uh encourage everybody to come out to the uh July fourth planned activities that our Parks and Recs folks have worked so hard to put together for us all. Um, and just a heads up that we are going to be launching the new website this week. Um, staff uh has worked really hard for quite some time, as I understand it, to make this uh switch as seamless and as perfect as possible. And it will not be perfect and we do expect some issues. And so uh we just ask, you know, first for some grace uh while we make those transitions and as those issues occur. Um, and really uh share those experiences that you're having, uh if you do have some problems, so that we can identify those um and make changes and fix those corrections as quickly as possible. My understanding is we're going from eighteen hundred pages to four hundred pages on our website, uh making things more accessible. But um that also means we um will expect some challenges. Um, and we need your help in identifying those those spaces. So uh that's all I was gonna uh provide uh tonight unless there are any questions. And I'm happy to support you, Mayor, in um any other topics you might want to discuss.
Great. Any questions? Great. So with that, we're looking forward to uh Fourth of July, which then brings us to not having a city council meeting on the Fourth of July. Uh, and so we will be having our work session the following week. Uh, and attended the A W C conference with Councilman Dahlhoff, Councilman Sorthout and Councilmember Abi. It was really great. Uh, it was a very jam-packed conference uh in Spokane. Uh, there was so much there and uh, and I don't even think we had ten minutes that wasn't filled with something. So we in from like seven in the morning till like ten or eleven o'clock at night, there was just something going on at every moment. Um, and uh, you know, we had talked about the garden, um, community gardens program. I also want to remind uh our community that those of age fifty five and plus, and I believe it's mid-July. I, it's on our Facebook and I believe we can get some more information, that the Fresh Program at the uh uh Isabella Bush Park on Tuesdays or Thursdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays. And I believe it is on the, uh, not the exact days, but there's like three weeks there on both the Thursdays and Fridays. It's like July eighteenth or somewhere in that timeframe. I should have wrote it down. I didn't. Um, there is going to be uh uh free vegetables for those individuals fifty five and over uh to uh to acquire. And that is in conjunction with the Fresh Program through the school district. So that'll be great. And again, Lisa mentioned the Fourth of July. And I think that's all I have. So is there anything else for the good of the order? And if not, we will close. Councilmember Kathy?
I just wanted to ask, is there going to be time somewhere along the way? Like, I'm uh, I'm curious with the four members of our uh council going to the conference. What were some of the uh courses or classes or discussion or whatever that you particularly chose to join and could, and are bringing something back for us?
You know, that's something that uh we will be getting those materials and a lot of that information. Uh, and we can share because um we could, um, because there is a lot of information. I believe A W C, if I'm not mistaken, will provide those online. And we can certainly share those links with you too. It was, there was so much information. It was, it was um, um, a lot of things. Uh, Councilman Dahlhoff, did you have something to add?
Just add, you can go to the website right now and look at the tracks and all the presentations and the handouts are attached to that. And then they'll, Debbie will say they're also gonna add more information, but all that stuff is there as well. And we all divided and conquered and did all the different sessions. I say like, look at what's interesting and then we can, I can follow up and share my notes.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not interested in looking at what was going on. I'm interested in you verbally saying what you, what you learned, what you saw, what was a highlight that you're, you're bringing back for us to to um benefit from. That's, that's what I want to, you know, here. I guess that's what the kind of thing I was saying at the beginning that we do in a work session, I imagine.
Yeah. Why do we bring that to a work session shortly? Yes, Peter?
So uh, Lea and I actually have a, a tea going on. So Lea, who, 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 would you want to wait now or just?
We'll do, we'll do a formal um presentation on what we learned. Because you, you know, how many, how many hours was that? We'll, we'll need to plan a little bit. We'll definitely share what we, our big things that came back, so.
It'd be great. Yeah.
When I said a tea going on, I meant, I'm sorry, it came out the wrong way. That's not what I meant. I meant we have city business that we thought our fellow council member would be interested in collaborating with us. And it's very, very, very good.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So I still haven't caught up with my email, let alone try to present all the things that was there. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely plan that, so.
Some highlights.
Yeah. All right. Councilman Sorthout?
Yeah, just one thing. I just wanted to share, um, A W C provides trainings all the time and you don't have to be a member, I believe. I think we can sign up for free. Um, we're good out with Hannah, but like today I took um, had an hour and a half webinar when uh they were sharing information about uh climate financing and uh from the new programs that the federal government and the state are pushing out. And so it was really informative. So I just really encourage people, if you, there's a great way to learn on your own time to jump on the A W C website, they just have so much information um that is very helpful to our jobs and everything here. So just want to encourage you to look at that.
So with that, I think we will uh be right at seven o'clock. And so we are going to go ahead and be adjourned. And thank you, everyone, and have a, uh, we will see you in two weeks. Have a great Fourth and a holiday.